Dais, start a meeting, please. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Barnstable Town Council meeting. And here it is, October 19th, 2023. I do want to make a quick announcement in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Okay. Not seeing any. Could we do a roll call, please? Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy.
Councillors Atzlis.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Cusack.
Present.
Rap Grissette. Leveque.
Here.
Ludke. Mendez.
Here.
Neary. Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
You have time.
Excellent. And Councilor Neary says he's en route, and so he will be with us momentarily. With that, if we could all please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to remember, conflict's happening all over the world. What's happening in Ukraine, the continued war there with Russia, and just want to, if we keep thoughts and prayers on what's happening in Israel and Palestine, and the innocent people who are losing their lives on an hourly basis there, if we can just keep that in mind and remember how lucky we are to live in a free country in a wonderful place like Cape Cod. So with that, please, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Be seated. And Councilor Neary, right on cue, has shown us his president on the dais. Welcome, Councilor Neary. So with that, now it is time for public comment. So if anybody would like to, in the hearing room first, speak during public comment, if you could please come to the podium, sign in your name, if you could let us know, and make sure the microphone's on. Let us know, again, your name, and you would have, preferably try to keep it under three minutes, please.
Good evening. Thank you for all the hard work you all do. It's not easy sometimes. My name's Roberta Mock, 80 Greenwood Avenue. I came last night to listen to, is it 305, 307 Main Street? I used to work at CCBNT, and there's a lot of, I was looking on the, I'd seen there's a, there's a lot of materials that could be reused for, they used to be placed and repurposed, I don't know what you call it, down, not Buzz's Bay Born there, it's not there anymore, I think it caught on fire, where they used to take, you know, beautiful pieces, I know they do it in Rhode Island, too. I've seen, I've seen, like, Las Vegas, when they refurbished Las Vegas, it ended up in Rhode Island. People buy it for their houses and so forth. And I'd just like to see that when they do tear down the bank that I used to work at, that I'd like to see, especially that piece about Abe Lincoln, somebody mentioned it, that'd be a good idea to, if the, I don't know if it would cost a lot to move it to the town hall somewhere. And just be careful, I was wishing I could walk through one more time, because I have a lot of memories there. And just, I know I will cry. I'd just like to see some of the pieces there. I know there was marble, one time we ended up repurposing the marble through a friend, because you just hate to see this stuff wasted. And this was one thing I wanted to bring up. I don't know what's going to happen at the dockside, but it grieves me that I can't have a Kohog and a Guinness there anymore. And I just wish that if they, and I, I know Stu Bornstein from back in the Smith &amp; Barney days, I'd like to talk with him personally again. I did tell him this, is that I think that it's sad, what he doesn't have the vision that you need to incorporate the public when you do something that is the best view of our Hyannis Harbor. I'm going to miss being able to sit there and watch the Fogawi come in, okay? That, to me, I just hope somehow, I'm going to keep praying on that one. The third thing, all right, I'm a little odd. I was looking at turtle crossing signs, to put one by Betty's, Aunt Betty's Pond, and one on the street. I've called the police twice now. At my house, I have the windows open, I can hear them leaving tire marks on the rotary at night, the kids, or whoever it is, I don't know what they're doing. It sounds like dragway, sounds like Daytona, Daytona dragway at nighttime. And I know, I don't know, that won't help, but even during the day, people, if I just like, if we put a turtle crossing sign there, there's a nice one by Aunt Betty's Pond, and one also, I got hit coming out from the symphony for the pops at the Melody Tent from that parking lot. I got hit, and I was stopped, and the guy was just barreling down that road there on Scudder, and hit me. And because I was taking a left, it was my fault, but I would like to see one there, because there's two creeks that, you know, and there are turtles on Twin Brooks. I don't know if they're endangered, I haven't seen them, but I, we talked to people, they're seeing these turtles. I tried.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Okay. I've tried to get the state of Massachusetts down there to see if they are the endangered species, but that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. Anyone else in the hearing room like to speak during public comment?
Hi, I'm Patricia O'Connor, and I'm from Osterville. I'd just like to present to this council that I'm not against the windmills at Dalles's Beach. I think they're doing what they can, and I think they're doing it properly. I'm not against that. What I am against terribly is tearing up Wayano Avenue and Osterville Barnstable Road. Osterville is a walking town. Everybody in Osterville walks through town all the time, not just June to September. People walk all year round, and there are a lot of elderly people there who don't drive anymore, so they walk. They walk to the library, they walk to the post office, they walk to the little stores. And if you allow Avon Grid to go down West Main Street, it's going to take three years, and it's going to tear up our town. Now, I don't know if any of you remember the A&amp;P in Osterville. So that left, and everybody got very used to going to the Stop &amp; Shop. So when the other market opened up there, although they were not stocked well, but people were so used to going to Stop &amp; Shop, they didn't really go to that market. And I'm afraid that's going to happen to our stores in Osterville. You know, three years doesn't seem like much, but then you have to build your clientele again, and people will get used to going to Avishan Hardware Store, and they'll get used to the people there. So they won't come to our, our hardware store anymore. And it's, it's hard for me to see you tear up that street when Old Mill Road is really, I've already measured that, is a mile shorter for them to go Old Mill Road than to go down an Osterville Barnstable Road. And it will affect one quarter of the number of people than if you close down Main Street in Osterville. It just would be a shame. I mean, my, my children come to visit, and they don't do, they don't always shop in town, but they love to walk through town. My grandchildren will ride their bicycles. If Avon Grid comes through there for digging up things for three years, and we don't, the sewer pipes they're talking about aren't going to help that many people. They're going down Main Street. They're not, it's not really going to help a lot of people in Osterville. And our bays so far have been pretty good. We haven't had an algae problem. Now, we have an algae problem in Parker Pond, but that's the only one, and that's really not going to be affected by these sewer pipes. On top of that, it's going to take twice as long. They'll dig down for the sewer pipes, put them in, then they have to cover them up, then they have to dig again to put down the cables. It's going to take forever. And other towns are going with these watershed permits. We could do that for another 20 years. And Osterville doesn't really need to have Avon Grid put in our sewer pipes and disrupt our entire town and all the businesses there, and all the people who live there and who love to walk through town. We have people come, I have people come just so they can go through town, because it's a little town, and they've got a lot of shops you can go in and out of, and restaurants there, and I'm just afraid if you shut down that Main Street when there's such a great alternative to go the other way, and it's shorter, and you take down Osterville Barnstable Road, how are people going to get into town? They're going to have to get their GPSs and take back roads, or they're going to get stuck in traffic on 28.
Could you wrap it up, please? I'm sorry, you're over.
Yes. Anyhow, I just hope that you all will take that into consideration, because I think it would be a shame to shut down our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Hi, I'm Mark Worten in West Barnstable. I live on Route 6A, where we probably have the largest pollution problem on the north side of the town of Barnstable. I'm asking the town council to direct the town manager to get hold of the state highway through probably our DPW, and get up here with some plans and some schematics and some sketches to fix the problem they created 90 years ago. So it all started around the 1930s, when the state said they were going to straighten Route 6A and put in a drainage system at the intersection of 6A, 132, and Oak Street. So when you're at the end of Route 132 with a stop sign, you see those two big green islands, and that's where the hill was, because the east and west lanes were right in front of you. And the state blew the hill back, created the islands, and created a westbound lane to straighten 6A. That's how they straightened 6A. And then they, they built the drainage system from up near the community college, all the way down 132, including all of the intersection, and headed at west past Buttonwood Lane into Patrick Page's backyard. And it's been there ever since, all the cigarette butts and the tons and tons of salt and sand put down by the state and the town, and the winters is all flushed down into his yard and into our great marsh, and into the shellfish beds, and into the commercial shellfish beds. And it's been 90 years, and it's about time they came and fixed their problem. So that's the issue, and please give us the help you can give us. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Good evening, town councillors. Chuck Tuttle, longtime central resident. It's great to see you all here, and I want to say thank you for all your efforts. We are all in favor of reducing greenhouse gases and increasing clean energy. The huge Spanish energy conglomerate Iberdrola, through their subsidiary Avon Grid, proposes to bring 2 billion watts of electrical transmission cables ashore at Craigville Beach and Dalles's Beach. On Monday, October 23rd, 6:00 PM, next Monday, at Barnstable High School Performing Arts Center, we will have a public meeting to allow Barnstable residents to ask questions and voice concerns about the proposed continued industrialization of their recreational areas and residential neighborhoods. I hope that every town councillor attends. I'm optimistic that this will be a productive meeting. It takes some energy and effort to put a meeting like this together, and of course, it's important to get the word out, to make sure people know that it is happening. To that end, several residents have been distributing leaflets to their fellow citizens and encouraging them to attend the event. I've taken a few hours and distributed informational leaflets in Centreville and Osterville. The vast majority of taxpayers and residents that I have talked with are totally unaware of this proposed project. They have no idea. My conversation with them was the first time they had ever heard of it. And why is this? Why are people unaware of such an enormously impactful project? Because they are busy running their businesses, raising their children, living their lives. And they, they don't pay attention because they trust you. They trust their town councillors to do the right thing, and say yes to development that improves their communities, ensures that they have clean water to drink, improves housing availability and affordability, improves the roadways, improves their quality of life. And they trust their town councillors to say no to development that industrializes their recreational areas, jeopardizes their health, compromises their environment, reduces their property values, and increases their utility bills. Most people don't have time to get involved in town business, myself included. A few months ago, I realized the enormity of this proposed industrialization and knew that I had to stand up and do something to stop it. We have 800 million watts running under Koval's Beach from offshore wind farms. That's more energy than the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant ever produced. Barnstable has done its part. We, as a town, need to figure out how to stop the further industrialization of our seaside villages, recreational areas, and historic Main Streets. The potential financial benefit promised by the increasingly weak contractor, who proposes to do this project, is pennies compared to the impact that this industrialization will have on our communities. We are selling our souls for cheap. Please, let's work together and communicate to the state agencies and federal authorities that Barnstable has done its part. Let's not let the town of Barnstable be the victim of overly aggressive, some say unrealistic, state and federal mandates for clean energy.
You're over time, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Working together, we can stop the further industrialization of our seaside villages. There are better ways to bring billions of watts of energy ashore. I'm looking forward to seeing you all next Monday, the 23rd, at 6:00, at Barnstable High School. Everybody's invited. Please come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Hello, everyone. Asia Graves, resident of Hyannis. I am not going to talk about housing first today. I want to talk about something a little bit different, medical marijuana. Now, I know some people are going to be like, why is she bringing that topic up? I'm a medical patient who lives in Barnstable County. I lived in Boston, LA, other areas. I had access to my medication. Living in Barnstable County, I don't have access to my medication. In order for me to get my medical marijuana as a non-driver, I have to take one of those little buses all the way out to Sandwich. And if you don't have a way to get to Sandwich, which a non-driver, most of us don't have ways to get there, we can't get access to our medicine, which, as some, I luckily go to Boston and buy in bulk, so I have that privilege to be able to do that. But the veterans, your seniors, and others don't have, may not have that privilege, and they're not getting access to their medication. I know that we are zoned for a dispensary and things of that sort. I would like to see if we can, we may not get a dispenser, but if we can have the town manager look into changing it so that dispensaries can deliver to medical patients here. I have a medical card. I went through my state process. I've done, I jumped all the hoops, the dispensaries have jumped the hoops. Why can they not deliver it to my door? They should be able to deliver my medication to my door like they can do in any other county. Barnstable voted years ago, a couple of years back, to block delivery for medical marijuana of our Hyannis. So I'm hoping that we can look into making it so that we can have delivery for medical patients. I think it's simple. Do you want me to go and buy street weed from drug dealers? As someone who has been involved in the criminal element as a survivor of trafficking, this is the region of the country that I would say, as a drug dealer, let me set up shop here in Barnstable. There's no medical dispensary. This is an easy market to bang out and make all the illegal money. So if you want to continue to have these drug dealers keep coming in our town and making all the profit, where Barnstable's not getting any of the tax revenue, we could be funding housing projects, paying for roads, paying for our sewer system with the money from medical marijuana delivery as a form of a tax. So I'm hoping that's something that could be looked into, because as someone who gets medical marijuana, I would say, hey, you don't want the drug dealers just to keep making all of the money. We should be making the money and making the market legal and safe. I don't trust buying weed from drug dealers, because I don't know where my weed is coming from. So we need to make it, we have a whole large senior population here, and can we also get an under-40 committee? We have a council on aging, councils for everything else, but there's nothing targeted to the under-40 demographic. In the wintertime, when Main Street slows down, there's nothing for people under 40 to do here, and there's nothing for teenagers to do here.
Asia, you going to wrap it up, please?
So those are just my viewpoints, and of course, as always, thank you. We need more housing, and thank you for making it so we can get 307 Main Street. We need that form of housing. Hopefully, you guys and whoever is on the new county council, if you all are, make sure that we get more affordable workforce housing, because it's desperately needed. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. Anybody else in the hearing room like to speak during public comment? You're not seeing any. Is anybody like to participate remotely, directly?
There's no one on Zoom for public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody who participated in public comment. And now it is time for response to public comment. Anybody to my right would like to respond to public comment? Council Clerk, please.
Thank you very much, President Leveque, and thank you, Mark Worten, for bringing this issue before the town council. As I go knocking on doors for this campaign, I have heard similar concerns about the, that section of Route 6A. And perhaps I should set up an appointment with DPW director to discuss what the state's plans are for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clerk. Anyone else? Looking to my left, anybody like to respond to public comment? Okay. I would just like to thank everybody for coming to public comment, and I would encourage anybody to...
Nobody has a response?
The, if, I would just encourage anybody, like, if you have any questions about certain things, definitely follow up with your, your councillor for your precinct in regards to certain concerns. I think some of the things that were brought up specifically, I, if you want, I mean, I know, if you want, I can, Ms. O'Connor, a lot of the things that you mentioned, quite honestly, some of that information is a little bit skewed, and like, so like, we're not, there's no definitive plans necessarily for anything with Commonwealth we're in right now, so a lot of that's just completely open-ended at this point.
I've talked to them. They've already surveyed Main Street.
I, I understand, but at this point in time, it's, it's so far down the road, is what I'm saying. So to say we have a definitive answer for any of the things that you might have said, you know what I mean, or anything else, sometimes when we don't respond, it isn't because, it's just that it would take a whole nother meeting to try to answer that. That's why I was just going to say, if you have questions and you feel like they're not answered, contact your councillor and have a conversation with them in regards to that, and you will get more definitive for information. It would give them time to be able to contact DPW director, get those plans out. We are your representative, but we don't always have all the answers. Every one of us would be honest with you to say that, where we're not the engineers and things of that nature, and to get you those, and we're not at every meeting that you've been to with Avon Grid and things of that nature. So we don't even know what they told you. Do you follow what I'm saying? So to get a definitive answer to that, follow up with your councillor, and I can tell you, Council Cusack will, will give you the information that you need as quickly as you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we try to make everybody happy as much as possible, but at the same time, sometimes that isn't possible, so we do the best we can. So, what's, so, and again, lots of different, you know, things brought up. Obviously, Mr. Tuttle brought up the meeting this coming Monday, and looking forward, really, I think this is an opportunity for our council to be able to, and our staff, to be able to have a room full of people that have questions in regards to something that, quite honestly, we're not the proponent of, right? So we're just moving forward, and, but it's something that we can come together and, you know, address any concerns that we have and direct those to the right parties, be it Avon Grid, be it the state, be it the federal level, whatever it might be. So looking forward to that. Okay, that being said, now it is time, I'm just going to take a quick break, and we're going to invite the, now it's time for our joint meeting with the school committee, so let's take a quick break for a couple of minutes, invite them up, and then we'll start with our joint committee, a joint meeting with the school committee. Thank you. Thank you. Counselors, school committee members, if you could, please, make your way to the dais. I'd like to welcome everybody back to our town council meeting for October 19th, 2023. Now it is time for our annual joint meeting with the school committee. This joint meeting of the town council and school committees to review the financial condition of the town, revenue and expenditure forecasts and other relevant information in order to develop a coordinated budget. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce the chair of the school committee, Michael Judge, and to open the meeting and call to order and roll call.
Thank you, President Levesque. I'll open up the joint meeting of the Barnstable School Committee and Town Council for October 19th, 2023. Roll call vote. Andre?
Here.
Peter? If? Kathy?
Here.
Chair is here, so four are here, so that needs that forum.
Thank you very much. So now our joint meeting is, is open, and I'd like to introduce our director of finance, Mark Milne here, and also assistant director, Gareth Markwell, also, and welcome and thank you, and you can start your presentation, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Good evening, counselors, school committee members. Pleasure to see you all this evening, this annual ritual that we have to get, to start our budget planning for the following fiscal year. Next slide, please. President Levesque already made his comments during opening remarks of why we have this meeting. It's under our Section 6-1 of our charter. Next slide. So we'll start off, first of all, by just reviewing the financial condition of the town. We have several metrics that we use to finance, to review our financial condition. The first one being our bond rating. Every year, we're a, we're a major player in the municipal bond market. We have a significant capital program. Every time we issue a bond, we have to have a rating agency review our financial condition and other information in order to assign a rating to that bond. So it's kind of like our financial or our credit rating, our financial report card. Standard and Poor's, the agency that we use, and once again, in 23, 2023, when we issued our last bond, we received the AAA rating, the highest rating you can get with a stable outlook, which is also, outlook is also a measurement that they provide you. You could go from stable to negative if there's a change in your economics, economic conditions, for example, but we are AAA with a stable outlook. Reasons for that rating include strong wealth and income levels, a comprehensive set of formalized financial policies and practices. We have a history of strong budgetary performance, maintenance, history of maintenance of strong reserves, and we have in their determination manageable pension and debt, debt burden and OPEB liabilities. About 60% of their rating is made up of looking at our local economy as well as our financial measures, and about 20% of their rating is into, looks at the management practices and how we're, we are managing those financing, those finances. And the last 20% is our, is looking at our debt and continued liability profile and our institutional framework. And in Massachusetts, you're working in an institutional framework, which basically is governed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, provides really a predictable and stable revenue source for most communities in Massachusetts. So Massachusetts is considered, Massachusetts communities are considered working within a very strong institutional framework overall. A second metric that we use to, to measure our financial condition is our annual financial audit. The last audit we had completed was in June of, for fiscal year ending 2022. We are currently under audit right now for the fiscal year 2023, but our last audit conducted provided us win and unqualified opinion. This is the opinion, this is considered a clean report. It's also the type of report that every entity strives to receive. An unqualified opinion doesn't have any adverse comments in it, and it doesn't include any disclaimers about any clauses or the audit process. In addition, we are subject to a single audit. A single audit is an organization-wide financial statement and federal awards audit of a non-federal entity that spends $750,000 or more in federal funds. It is intended to provide assurance to the federal government that a non-federal entity has adequate internal controls in place and is generally in compliance with program requirements. For the past several years, we have received no findings and no questioned costs in any of our federal grant programs, and those stretch across many departments, school departments, one of the biggest federal grant recipients every year. Our airport receives a lot of federal grant money, for example, but we have never had any questioned costs or findings, so we score very well there. Some of the highlights from our last audit include an increase in $64 million in our net assets, an increase of $12 million in governmental funds, and a 2% increase in our general fund balance compared to our general fund operating expenditures. So we are in upwards trend in all three categories, all positive financial news. Another metric that we use to assess our financial condition is our budget performance. We just closed fiscal year 2023, and as this table illustrates, every enterprise fund operation and the general fund all had a favorable budget variance. The general fund had a $12 million budget variance. So this, this illustrates that even though we used surplus to balance the budget, we were still able to generate surplus, resulting in a favorable budget variance. So all positive news. Revenues were trending well, we had some return appropriation, return appropriations under each operation. The only fund that did not have an actual surplus was the solid waste enterprise fund. They used about $5,000 to, for their operation, but we budgeted $371,000 to be used. They didn't use nearly that, they only used 5,000. So that's a favorable budget variance. Another metric we use to assess our financial condition is our free cash. Free cash is cash sitting in the treasury that is unencumbered by any obligation against it. So that's really the short definition of free cash. Every single fund had an increase in their free cash certification as of July 1, 2023, with the exception of the golf course enterprise fund. The increase is mainly a result of favorable budget variances that I showed you on the previous slide. The only fund that did not see an increase in its free cash was the golf enterprise fund, and that's because we used about $1 million to pay for their fiscal year 2024 capital program, and so we had to set that aside from their cash at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that's why there's a decrease of $284,000 there. As a percentage of the operating budget, we strive for four to six months of operating expenses for our enterprise funds. So that's anywhere from 33% to 50% of free cash available for the operating budgets. And as you can see, all of our enterprise funds are within that range, with the exception of the Hyannis Youth and Community Center. In fact, five of our enterprise funds have over 100% of their operating budget in free cash, and that will be used for future significant capital improvements that are intended for, in some of those funds. The general fund is much lower. Our policy is 4% to keep 4% in reserve for the general fund, and that's typical for municipal governments' general fund operations. They're much smaller because the main revenue source we have, again, is property taxes, which is a very stable revenue source. Your enterprise fund operations are really dependent upon one single source of revenue that they generate. The general fund gets state aid, lots of different local receipts in addition to that stable property tax revenue source. So when it comes to our reserves, we, the traditional thinking of what the reserves are, are set aside for is for one-time expenses, some startup funding for new programs, stabilize rates and pay for future liabilities. But we've incorporated additional thought process in managing those reserves, particularly around using them as a risk management tool. We have cash flow risks. Our general fund property taxes come in once every quarter. Many of our enterprise funds receive a significant amount of their revenue one time during the year, when transfer station stickers renew, for example, slips renew in our marinas, golf memberships renew in the golf course enterprise fund once a year. So you have to have enough cash on hand to get you through the slow months until you start collecting the revenue from the renewals of memberships, for example. So cash flow risk is one risk we're guarding against when we're thinking about how we, how much reserves we need to have on hand. Another one is revenue instability. Recession's occur, we could have a contraction in some of our revenue sources. We could also have a changing political environment at the state level, which could affect our state aid, so we have to assume some risk there and how much, what is our risk tolerance and how much reserves do we want to maintain to protect ourselves against revenue instability? Another thought process that we, that we use is what's our risk tolerance for uninsured events? We have, we're susceptible, of course, to natural disasters. Things are happening, weather intensity is increasing across the country. We saw what happened in Leominster in the middle of the state, and, and so you have to have some kind of risk tolerance in place for how much you're willing to keep in reserves to protect you against disasters like that. Many times, federal or state aid could kick in to help you with those disasters, but it could be years before you receive that money, so you need a cash resource to draw against to pay for expenditures that you're incurring during the middle of the cleanup. In fact, we just received our FEMA reimbursement for our COVID-related expenditures from three years ago. Took us three years to get that money, so it takes time. So you have to have a reserve in place. And finally, there are certain events that we, we self-insure ourselves for, like workers' compensation, and so we have to have, we can't really affect, we can't buy any policy to cover us for workers' compensation, so we have to self-insure ourselves for that. So these are some of the other reserves that we have in place. Most of these are used for operating purposes. The first four are really for our capital program. These help manage the significant amount of capital projects that we have planned for the next five years, or at least scheduled for the next five years. We don't have enough resources to fund it all, but we do have some resources here to help us manage the implementation of that. Of course, the community preservation fund has almost $10 million set aside in its undesignated fund balance, and that's specific, for specific purposes listed here. The good news there is that the land bank bonds that we had outstanding from 20 years ago are mostly all paid off, and so that program is going to have a lot more funding available going forward for these particular purposes. The OPEB liability is for a long-term liability. That's traditional thinking. We're trying to bank money to pay for a future unfunded liability that we're committed to for health insurance. And finally, workers' compensation, as I mentioned, that's something that we're self-insured for, so that $4.2 million is there to help pay for the annual cost that we incur for employees who go out on injured leave. Next, we have one other potential revenue source that could help increase or strengthen our reserves, and this is the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, also known as ARPA funds. Barnstable received almost $7.7 million in an allocation. Communities who received $10 million or less can elect to use those resources as a replacement for lost revenue, which Barnstable did, meaning that we could use them for any general government service with only two exceptions. We can't pay debt service with it, and we can't pay off anything towards our unfunded pension liability with it. So we have strategically used this for the biggest project here for quite some time is the digitization of our records across many departments. I think we're down to the town clerk, perhaps, is our last department that we're digitizing records for now, so that's almost complete. But we also had several positions in our IT departments, our police department, we had a grant coordinator in planning and development, that we, we created those positions and funded them initially with this revenue source, but that's all been migrated over into the operating budget as of fiscal year 24, so no more salaries are being charged to this grant resource anymore. So we're left, we, we're projecting we'll have about $4.2 million of unobligated ARPA funds at the end of this fiscal year. Our plan is to charge off some, the, for example, $4 million of health insurance costs to that remaining balance, and what that will do will allow us to put that unexpended health insurance cost back into our general fund reserves, and then we're not tied to a deadline, because these funds have to be expended by December 2024. This way, we can get them expended, bank them in our general fund reserves, and then bring that money back to the town council for a specific project for your appropriation authority, because general fund reserves are subject to your authority for appropriation. That way, we, we avoid the deadline, we put the money in our reserves, and we can use it, we can strategically for some project or projects in the future. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Gareth, who's going to talk a little bit about our property taxes and how they're trended over the years.
Good evening, Gareth Markwell, deputy finance director. Again, as Mark had mentioned earlier, we collect revenue from various sources annually, but the property taxes is by far the, the largest of those categories. If we look at our tax levy from FY15 through FY24, we're looking at a levy of $107 million in FY15 and up to $145 million in FY24 projected. That's not by no means the... That's not by no means the maximum amount that we could levy, obviously with our override capacity being up close to a total of five hundred and seventy-four million this year. Our tax levy has grow, has grown on average three point four percent annually, and we're currently taxing at about twenty-six percent of, of that capacity. So again, we have plenty of room there. To put in perspective, we've had valuation growth, which drives that levy from twelve point six billion in FY fifteen to just over, or just under twenty-two billion in FY twenty-three. So you can see some significant growth there. Looking at the chart, FY twenty-two to twenty-three, you can see the, the large growth there. Again, largely due to the increased value assessments within Barnstable. Looking at current debt exclusions, we currently have one debt exclusion included in our tax levy. That's for the Cape Cod Regional Tech School. That came online in FY fiscal year twenty. We had prior to that, two overrides, one for the middle school and one for the high school. They fell off around the same time as the Cape Cod Tech School had their referendum and somewhat replaced that override. The debt exclusion is variable year to year, largely based on the assessment from the tech school, which is driven by October first enrollment each year. As an example, our one point seven million assessment in fiscal year twenty-four was up two percent from twenty-seven percent to twenty-nine percent. And that was due to an increase in students. FY twenty-three, it looks like we have about a hundred and ninety-three students there. So we're somewhat vulnerable in that, that exclusion is derived from the number of students annually at that school. So it's, we monitor that closely year over year. Our tax rates largely stable year to year. You can see in the graph that in fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, we start to see a downward trend in the tax rate. Unfortunately, that does not translate to a decrease in everyone's tax bills. It doesn't change the levy, just our assessed value has increased at a higher level, and so it brings the actual tax rate down. In FY twenty-four, we're assuming a ten percent increase in residential values, two percent in commercial, industrial, and personal property, and we're assuming a twenty cent, a twenty percent residential exemption in this graph. I believe next month, there will be the actual tax rate sitting. Our tax levy distribution, we collect taxes mainly from residential properties. FY twenty-three, just over a hundred and twenty-five million. And that is split with commercial properties, with just over fifteen million. Interesting, we have in FY twenty-one and twenty-two, sorry, FY twenty-two and twenty-three, we actually have a decrease in commercial, industrial, personal property levy amounts, and largely due to the fact that our residential property values have grown at a pace faster than that of the commercial properties. So you see that, that movement of the levy over to the residential category as opposed to the commercial side. New property tax growth. Again, new property tax, tax growth isn't the reassessed value. It's actually related to exempt properties returning to the tax rolls, new subdivisions, condominium conversions, large-scale renovations. We have averaged about one point one million over the course of the, the time on the screen here from FY oh-six to twenty-five, we're projecting. We currently budget about seven hundred and fifty thousand annually in new growth. Again, this does not include revaluation. It's purely kind of new construction. Top taxpayers in Barnstable. We're looking at the top ten taxpayers in Barnstable, contributing to about three percent, or just over three percent of the total assessed value in the town. This is spread amongst utilities, shopping malls, shopping centers, apartments, and golf clubs. We expect in FY twenty-four to see Vineyard Wind hit the list and around the fourth spot as we, as they bring online their projects and we assess value to that property. Major changes in FY, from FY twenty-three to twenty-four. The Wiano Club, I believe, replaced Cape Cod Five in, in one of those lower spots there. Again, a variable, a very favorable position for us, kind of under four percent in assessed values. We were not concentrated on any one entity or individual in our tax base. So there's, there's less vulnerability there from the town's perspective. I'll pass that back to Mark.
Thank you, Gareth. So looking at some of our other major revenue trends, the second highest, or third highest source of revenue now, used to be the second highest, but now it's the third highest, is motor vehicle excise tax. This has been on an upward trend, as illustrated in this chart. We used a very conservative estimate in fiscal year twenty-four of about eight million. We took in over nine million the two previous fiscal years. So we have capacity to grow that revenue estimate. So we're projecting to move that from eight million to eight and a half million in fiscal year twenty-five. And this is largely due to the trend in vehicle sales. As this chart illustrates, vehicle sales are strong across the country. And our motor vehicle excise tax. Sorry. My, our, our motor vehicle excise tax has trended similarly to the way vehicle sales have trended on a national basis. So as you see here, there's an upward trend over this two-year period, and our motor vehicle excise track, tax has correspondingly trended upwards. Chapter seventy-eight for education. This is now our second largest revenue source, the state aid. This is mainly a result of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, which began in fiscal year twenty-two. Fiscal year twenty-four is the third year of implementation. It's a six-year plan, so we have three more years, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. We saw significant increases in this revenue source in twenty-three and twenty-four, a five million dollar bump in twenty-three, six million dollars in twenty-four. This revenue source used to represent about fifteen percent of our local schools' operating budget. Now it represents closer to thirty percent because of the Student Opportunity Act and the additional funding provided from the state from that act. We are projecting about a three million dollar increase right now for fiscal year twenty-five. It's likely to be more than that, more likely than not to be more than that. The October first enrollments were just released and provided to the Department of Education, and they will be using those October first enrollments and giving them, putting them into the chapter seventy formula to determine what the new allocations will be for fiscal year twenty-five, which will come out in January sometime. But we are optimistic that we will see at least a three million dollar increase in this, in this funding source again for fiscal year twenty-five. Meals tax revenue is trending upwards over this period of time. You can see the, the blue line represents the total revenue collected for every fiscal year. We did have, you know, a decrease during the middle of COVID in twenty and twenty-one, but it's back on the upwards trend over the past few years. And we continue to project it to go in an upwards trend for the, for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Same thing with rooms tax revenue. We have, for traditional lodging that goes into the general fund, we had, you know, slight decline, declines in fiscal year twenty and then a large decline in fiscal year twenty-one due to COVID. But then it bounced back in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. And we have, you know, a little bit more of a conservative estimate for twenty-four and twenty-five than where we came in in fiscal year twenty-three. Same thing with traditional lodging that goes into the sewer construction and private way special revenue funds, same kind of trend as the general fund lodging. And vacation rentals. That category of rent, of tax revenue began in fiscal year twenty. That was the first year of implementation. And then you can see it, it's trended upwards in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, and we're projecting a slight decline in twenty-four with a slight increase after that in twenty twenty-five. Building permit revenues, another major source in the general fund operating budget. As you can see, this has trended upwards. And then in fiscal year twenty-three, we had a significant increase in this revenue source. I have to qualify that because that came from one big permit, essentially. Cape Cod Healthcare's new tower in Hyannis paid over an eight hundred thousand dollar building permit fee. So we can't expect those to occur year after year. However, we are optimistic that we can grow that revenue estimate from twenty-four, which was set at about one million, one point two million. To FY twenty-five, we're increasing it to one point five million. Investment income, another change here. Markets, you know, the, the federal government has increased the interest rates for the past two years on a regular basis. This impacts the costs of how we, how much we can borrow money for. But it also offers us the opportunity to invest our excess cash on hand in, in investments that return higher rates of return. So we have seen a jump from about six hundred thousand collected in fiscal year twenty-two to over two million dollars collected in fiscal year twenty-three. We conservatively estimated this at five hundred thousand for twenty-four. So we have a lot of capacity here to go north with this revenue estimate, and we did so in our preliminary planning for fiscal year twenty-five by bringing that revenue estimate up to one point five million dollars. And Gareth will now talk about some of the general fund expenditure drivers that we're looking at.
Yeah, so when we look at general fund on the expenditure side of the equation, obviously, the first thing we always need to look at is salary and wages. We, in municipal government, it's a very personnel-heavy operation. So again, salary and wages contribute to about seventy, just shy of seventy percent of our operating budgets. FY twenty-four, our total budget was about a hundred and five million dollars, municipal and school combined. So to put that in perspective, every one percent adds just over one million dollars to our budget. As far as drivers for our budget, both in fiscal year twenty-four and beyond, all of our school collective bargaining agreements will expire June thirtieth of twenty... Sorry, all non-school collective bargaining agreements expired June thirtieth of twenty-three. So we're currently under negotiations. And all schools' collective bargaining agreements will, will expire one year later on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Under our, one of our fixed costs, our pension assessment, we have a FY twenty-four actuarially determined contribution for all town or all Cape towns of eighty-three point four million. The town's share of that is twelve point four million. The funding schedule provides for a five point eight increase, eight percent increase of that value each year. So right off the bat, we're looking at about a six hundred thousand dollar increase year over year. The contribution amount is based on the community's covered payroll. So each October, we submit a report to the retirement association, us along with every other community on the Cape. And we're looking at about fifteen point five eight percent of that total assessment. This is a, a variable assessment in that a percentage change in our covered payroll, whether it be our payrolls going up or our surrounding communities going down, can heavily influence that assessment. So as an example, a one percent change in that assessment of that covered payroll could add one million dollars to that assessment. So it's, it's something we monitor very closely. The, the report is put together very thoroughly every year and reviewed multiple times, and we work with, with the county to ensure that that's done accurately. And lastly, you'll recall, the COLA approved for current retirees will add an additional seventy thousand dollars to assessments in the future. Health insurance, total budget, about thirteen point five million, and that's based on our current fifty-fifty contribution split. If we continue and look at a seventy-thirty split for active employees, we are projecting initial, initial increase of about one point eight million, slightly variable in the fact that it's very hard to determine changes to participation of existing members if that, that change is made. About one percent in rates can, and a one percent increase in rates can add about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this assessment. Pre-COVID, we were looking at rates each year changing between five and eight percent. During COVID, rates were largely unchanged, just due to the lower use of, of those plans at that time. Our capital program, we currently contribute about fifteen million dollars in general fund from the general fund each year. Seven point two million of that is for debts, existing debt service for current projects, and seventy, seven point eight million for cash-funded projects. We increased our contribution to the capital program by two and a half percent each year and plus a additional seven hundred and fifty thousand from new growth. Acceleration of our capital program will put pressure on the, and CWMP will put pressure on our capital program and our ability to fund. And in addition, working with the school department and our CIP process, they have just completed, completed their school facility study, which has identified about a hundred and thirty-two million in identified needs at this point. Another large cost driver on the expenditure side, obviously, is utilities and fuel. Somewhat level FY nineteen through twenty-one. We've seen growth in this cost category in FY twenty-two and project, and FY twenty-three. We pretty much level funded with slight increases in FY twenty-four. Going into FY twenty-five, we're looking at the largest driver being electricity. And we're, we're coming off contracts, and we'll start a new contract on July one of two thousand twenty-four. On the supply side, putting the commodity aside, the supply side, we're projecting somewhere close to a fifty-three percent increase on just the supply side charge. Our current projection will have a general fund impact of about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the general fund and an enterprise fund increase of about two hundred and fifty thousand. As Mark had mentioned, the Student Opportunity Act has been put in place around FY twenty-three. This, while we are receiving additional revenue, it's also an expenditure driver for us because it now sets a new base for how much we need to spend year over year on education. FY twenty-five's increase is estimated to be six million. Half will come from chapter seventy. We're projecting about three million. But the other three million will need to come from local sources. Driving our foundation budget is obviously our enrollment. We have preliminary numbers for FY twenty-four, which we submitted to the Department of Education on October first. We're looking at four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine students, and this excludes our out-of-district students, which is around thirty to forty students, off the top of my head. is around 30 to 40 students off the top of my head. So an increase of about 51 students over the prior fiscal year.
So on the capital program side, this is a schedule that shows, or a table that shows what our capital project submissions were for the next five years. This is going to be updated very soon. Departments are working on their new submissions for the next five-year period, so 24 is coming off and 29 will be added. We expect an increase in the total dollar amounts that will be submitted. We were able to do most of the enterprise fund projects, about $22 million of enterprise fund projects were approved in 24, about 13 million in general fund projects, not the whole 50 million. And we did all of the 33.5 million in CWMP projects. So again, this will be updated, but this is a major reason why we're trying to commit more resources to our capital program because it is becoming larger and larger, and that new school study will add more projects on the school side of the capital budget. And how do we finance this stuff? Just like you or I would finance a large purchase of a home or a car, you're going to borrow the money to do it, and that's what we do. We borrow money to do many of our capital projects. As I mentioned earlier, the cost of borrowing has gone up. Back in fiscal year 21, we borrowed, we issued a bond, a 20-year bond, and it costs us about 1.2% on average for the interest rate, the best interest rate I think we've ever received. It shot up to 2.2% in fiscal year 22's debt issue, 3.2% fiscal year 23's debt issue. We're expecting over 4% when we go out to the market this spring. And just, it's just the fact of the market's the way it is now, we can't control it, but at least having a AAA rating provides a little bit of cushion on that and maybe saves us a three to four basis, 30 to 40 basis points on that borrowing rate. And it's strongly tied to the history of the 10-year treasury rate. Whatever the 10-year treasury rate is paying is typically what we borrow at. And as you can see from this chart, that has gone up. It continues to climb. And as of the October 2023, it's in excess of 4%. So that's the basis for our assumption that we can expect about a, over, just over a 4% borrowing rate when we issue our next bond. Looking at our capital trust fund, which is the main tool that we've put in place to manage our general fund capital, we think we can manage about another $50 million in new borrowings over the next five years to fund general fund projects. We can, we have the capacity for about $4 million annually in cash-funded projects. We have about $175 million in capacity for new loans for the CWMP program, largely attributable to the almost $6 million that we've committed towards, in general fund revenues committed towards that program. And it also assumes that we're going to get these projects listed on Department Environmental Protection's intended use plan, making them eligible for Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund subsidies and the Mass Clean Water Trust Funds subsidies and low interest rates through that loan program. So if those assumptions hold true and those events happen, we think we can finance about 175 million from this fund for the CWMP program. Most of our enterprise fund capital is going to be managed through rates and grants, grant opportunities. We receive a lot of grants, especially in the Airport Enterprise Fund that pays for the majority of their capital program. Turn it back to Gareth to wrap it up here. We review our proposed policy agreement for the fiscal year 25 general fund revenue allocation.
So annually, we get together and we look at how we are going to share revenue and fixed cost expenditures going forward when developing the budget. So we start with our revenue sharing agreement. Generally speaking, the first step is to look at the growth of the revenues and reduce that by any increases in fixed costs. Included in those fixed costs are contributions to the capital program, as I said earlier, the 2.5% increase plus the 750,000 in new property growth. Remaining growth, revenue growth is then split 60-40. Savings accounts, returned appropriations from either the school department or municipal departments are returned to so-called savings accounts for benefit of those departments. And any excess revenue generated, any excess revenue generated over budget estimates and returned appropriations of fixed costs are then split 60-40 to the school and municipal savings. The use of the savings for FY 25 operating in capital is subject to the town council So looking at our general fund revenue growth, we're looking at total revenues of, growth of about just over $14 million or 7.28%. Again, our largest category growth will be $4.1 million in property taxes and then down to state aid at just over 2.6 million. Our current projection includes general fund savings use of just over 4.2 million for potential snow and ice deficits and health insurance contribution changes. If we look at our, how that, then we look at our assessments, sorry. Changes in our fixed cost assessments, we're projecting at this point just over $7.4 million. The largest change being in employee benefits and other fixed costs. That will leave approximately 6.9 million or an increase of 5.31% over FY 24. Splitting that 60-40, we're looking at just over 2.7 million for the municipal budget change and just over 4.1 million, 5.02% increase in school operations. Again, for a total increase of 6.9 million. Our savings account, again, we had this certified earlier in the month, certified as of July 1, 2023, we are up to just over, just under 33 million, an increase from our July 1, 2022 balance of 26.7 million. Returned appropriations for both municipal and school departments totaled just over $2 million. Returned appropriations for fixed costs were just over 1.7 million. And as Mark had mentioned, excess revenue of just over 8.6 million. So again, a certified balance of July 1, 2023 of just shy of 33 million. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, because as always thorough, appreciate that. And now I would open up for questions. Looking to my left, any questions? Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, and thank you for the presentation. Very informative. I've got just a couple of questions. You're in negotiation with non-school CBAs. I'm just curious, like a timeframe, I know it's maybe a moving target, but when might you anticipate that that might be brought to a head?
I think by the, probably the end of November, we'll probably be settled with all of them.
I hope they're going well.
Thank you.
Second, just a couple of things that I kind of picked out. Electricity costs since 2019, they're up 40%. And if I heard right, they may be up another 53%? Is that where, did I hear that right?
The supply side of the electricity cost, yes, is going to go up 53%. We are part of the Cape Lake Compax Consortium, and we participated in a new two-year electricity rate, RFP. The bids came in and the cost is going up, the supply side of the cost, which is about half the bill.
Yep.
It's going to go up about 50%.
Do you know, just by, curious, what the cost per kilowatt hour was in the present contract we had and what it may be going to?
That number I don't have with me, but I can get it for you. I have the numbers from the bid.
I'm curious. And then you had a quick slide, it kind of went by fast, but there was a, over 90% change. It was listed in other revenue in the capital trust. I'm just curious, it was up like 1, 2. You mentioned the first two, but there was another one that was up quite significantly. Maybe three slides back, the capital. I'm just curious what makes up that other revenue change.
Excellent. Other revenue?
There you go.
Investment income. We are increasing our estimate for investment income. The treasurer's doing a fantastic job.
That's good news. Thank you.
And just so everybody knows, I'll go through the counselors and then I'll hand it over to Chairman Judge, and then he can go ask if any of the school committee members have questions. So any of the counselors on to my left, Counselor Mendez, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Just a quick question. What metric do you use to determine the projection for building permits?
We look at historical trends, and then we talk to the building commissioner about what's in the pipeline. And right now, there are some large projects in the pipeline, like was mentioned earlier this evening, the housing development potential at the old former TD Bank building. And so we talked to him about what does he see out there and what's he got for anticipated significant building that's in the pipeline for permitting? And based upon that, we think we can continue with, we're going to see some growth in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mendez. Any other questions to my left from the counselors? Looking to my right, any questions in the council? Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque, and thank you very much for your presentation. I am pleased that the town now has a grant writer. Does the grant writer serve both the school department and the town side of the House?
I think the school department has their own staff that is, that does a lot of, most of their grant writing.
Interesting. Thank you. And when will the debt for the Cape Cod Tech School retire? About?
20 years from now. It's a 25-year note.
Thank you. Got to wait for that.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Any other questions? Counselor Snep, did you have your hand up?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation. A lot of information, and this is probably my sixth, fifth or sixth time hearing a lot of it, so you would think I have a good handle on it. But in future presentations, I would love to get this ahead of time because it's really hard to go back and, you know, pick out the questions with all the data points that you have provided us tonight, but thank you. Could you spend a little bit more time on the impact of the rising interest rate environment? We're looking at a lot of debt going forward, and so I'm wondering, where's the tipping point between the investment income that's obviously increasing and the increasing costs in our debt?
Certainly, yeah. It's this, you know, we, we see an upwards trend in borrowing rates. All indications right now appear that the Fed's going to stop what they're doing. There may be one more rate hike, and then that's it. And so I think we'll see interest rates level off beyond that. And then most likely in outer years, they'll probably start coming back down once we have some, you know, economic contraction. They'll adjust those rates back downward, which will impact us in lower borrowing costs in the future. But about every 1% increase in rates generally depletes our purchasing power by 10%. So we could have borrowed 10 million at 3.2%. We can only borrow 9 million at 4.2% for the same annual loan payment. That's about the fiscal impact for us. But certainly, the cost more to borrow, we're going to be able to borrow, we're going to be able to issue fewer loans because of the loss of that purchasing power. But that could be offset by making increased contributions to the capital program, which is what our intention is. We continue down that path to try to push more and more of our revenue growth in the general fund into the capital side of the budget before we have anything for the remainder is allocated to the operating side of the budget.
Okay. So in fiscal '25, we have a very large possible obligation, 135 for the CWMP. I also heard mention of a completed school facilities need study of 132 million. I have no idea how that's going to translate into capital needs in the future. Do we have any idea when that might, information might be coming before us or before the school committee?
That'll come before you in the spring. Departments will be, are working on their capital submissions now, including the school department, based on that study that they had done. Their submissions are due in November. We go, we'll have a process where they'll be vetted by a capital task force. We'll have a meeting in December to ask questions about, specifically more about the projects that they're requesting funding for in fiscal year 25. We'll go through the process of prioritizing those projects. Usually, projects that, that are related to public health and safety are rated the highest, and they usually end up receiving funding before other things. But that's all part of the capital review process that we, that we go through before we bring forward to you the capital program, submit to you a capital budget sometime in the March timeframe.
And it's always a challenge on the town council that we sort of get the decisions arriving at our dais. And so it'd be great if we had some information ahead of time because I'm wondering, it looks like, you know, we've been able to put off a debt exclusion for the capital, for the comprehensive waste water management plan to date.
Sure. So when we get all those submissions from the departments, we will share all those submissions with you ahead of time so you can see what the departments are submitting.
Okay. But again, I'm wondering, you know, oftentimes with large school projects, whether it's adding actual new school buildings or, I mean, I don't know what we're talking about, if everything is just a renovation of existing school buildings or if we're talking much more expansive planning. And that would require, you know, a debt exclusion for the schools. And again, that might be in a future conversation.
Can I just, President?
Hand it over to Chairman Mike Judge.
So just, so, so the facilities report that we got in has nothing to do with adding its maintenance. So it's, it's not, and just as Mr. Mills said, it is, they rated it in 1, 2, and 3, I believe, and 1's worth 0 to 3 years is what they were giving as a timeline, so the most immediate ones. Then I think it was 3 to 5 years was the 2's, and then like 5 to 8 years was the, so it's like kind of over an eight-year plan. Does that, does that kind of help you a little bit?
Very much.
Yeah, so it's, I want to say 132 priority ones? Is that correct?
72.8.
72.8 million for 0 to 3-year priority ones. That's, and then it went up, so the whole 132 million was over an eight-year period, and it was the 72.8 for 0 to 3 years is what they forecasted. So does that make it kind of?
It, it puts in perspective.
Just what you're talking for a timeline.
Right, right. I know that there have been a conversation or two about whether the existing school, school layouts are adequate for the needs of our school student population, so.
And that's a whole nother conversation.
Yes.
This report, and just, just, and I understand, because we, I understand that you want the information as soon as, so us as a school committee just got the facilities report and had a couple of meetings about it in the last month. So this is fresh to the school committee. So just, so it's not like we got this last May and it's just coming through, and it's like, well, wait, wait a minute, where is it for the town council? We got this literally a month ago. We had it at our last, like the last two school committee meetings, I think, where it was a double, like a two-sided presentation. And then we had a workshop on it the end of September. So that's, it's still fresh coming to us. So that's kind of, I'm sure folks will be bringing it forward to you guys, but it just literally just came to us in the last month or so, so.
Thank you. And my point is, it's more just that we and the public understand the, you know, that there's not just a sewer expansion project going on in town. There's also an aging school infrastructure that in addition to the maintenance needs, there may need to be, you know, we haven't had a debt exclusion for our may need to be, you know, we, we haven't had a debt exclusion for our schools in 25-plus years, right? We've retired the debt. We haven't had any, we've closed schools, but we haven't had any major expenses. So, just wanted to put that out there. So, I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you, Council Snapp, and thank you for the explanation. Chairman Judge, any other council questions before I hand it back to Chairman, Council Shaughnessy? I already went to this side. Where was your hand then? No, just kidding.
Thank you, President Levesque. Director Millen, I wanted to know, I know you've mentioned in the past that one of our only untapped sources of revenue in the town is marijuana sales. We've had a member of the public who's raised that issue at a couple meetings here. I wanted to know if you know, maybe based on what's happening in Sandwich or Mashpee, that if we were to bring that to the town of Barnstable, what will we be looking at in terms of a revenue projection?
I can get you some numbers. I've, I've looked at all the communities who've implemented recreational marijuana in the communities and what their tax revenue is over a course of a calendar year. And I can share that information with you. But I, I think Mashpee, when I looked at Mashpee, I think they generated a little more than a couple hundred thousand dollars from the marijuana tax. And so, there comes a, it comes to a point where, you know, the market's kind of, I guess, gets saturated and, you know, if everybody were to approve this, you know, it just gets saturated and it's not, I don't see it as a significant revenue generator unless you go to Berkshire County and specifically Great Barrington. Great Barrington gets about 1.2 million dollars in tax revenue because they're drawing people from New York State and Connecticut and Massachusetts. But those states are implementing legislation that allows them to do it as well. So, hopefully, they didn't lack themselves until long-term obligations for that money.
So, definitely not a $6 million loss of revenue. We're talking hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, hundreds of thousands.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Shaughnessy. Madam Vice Chair, call him, please.
Is that, just kind of piggybacking on Council Shaughnessy's, isn't the revenue from marijuana earmarked for particular programs within a community? So, it's not like it could go directly into the general fund. It would have to go to harms reduction or education or, that's what I recall from years ago. I don't know if that's still the case.
Yeah, there is a, you can, in addition to the tax, you can charge a, a community impact fee. The community impact fee, I think, is restricted for, has to be dedicated to certain things. But the tax, I believe, is unrestricted.
Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much for this. Other opportunity to ask a question. This summer, I attended the Cape, One Cape Summit. And I remember attending a workshop where it was explained to us that properties on the higher end of the scale are typically under-assessed, undervalued. That was a trend that was explained to us. I remember making a note of it and then meant to address that at one time. So, I don't know what's the best strategy for addressing that, if that's in fact true in Barnstable.
Well, I think, I think our director of assessing has done a good job in assessing and reviewing the higher-end properties and adjusting those values just based on the abatement applications we've been receiving from those homeowners who think that they're over-assessed. So, we've, we are looking at those on a regular basis. And we have seen significant increase, especially in waterfront properties in Barnstable.
Thank you, Council Clark. Council Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gareth, you mentioned in the slide on the pension assessments. Remind me, is it just the general employees that are included in the Barnstable currently retirement and the teaching faculty is part of the state pension? Is there?
Yeah, that's kind of one of the best deals in town. All of the professional teaching staff fall under the Massachusetts teachers retirement system. It's not part of our retirement contribution.
So, we, we don't have to make a contribution for that?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know if you have this number on hand, but did the assessment that was due in 9:30, I believe, to the county, how did that compare to last year's?
I believe it's still being finalized at this point.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious with the number of vacancies we've had. And I just didn't know if we're staying about the same or if we've had any significant change in that.
Yeah, the, the retirement board will put together an assessment and they'll go through and we'll be able to see our total payroll costs compared to previous year as well as our peers, which is probably the thing that's going to be the largest variable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Snapp. Any other council questions? Okay. Chairman, the school committee, Mike Judge, please. Andre, do you have any questions? No? Peter? Kathy? Kathy, you must have a question.
No, thank you for the report. I think it was very comprehensive and very easy to understand the way you laid it out. I have not been following it as closely as I should, but the 70-30 insurance split, is that finalized? And if so, when is it, when will it be effective?
It's still under negotiation. And when it does get finalized, we anticipate an effective date of July 1st, 2024.
And would you want to venture a comment on how likely it is? I know from.
Part of negotiations.
Right. It's part of negotiations.
Part of negotiations.
Oh, it's in negotiation within your collective bargaining, so you can't comment?
Yeah, so we can't comment.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I have no questions. I would just say thank you very much for the presentation as always. I'm glad that we're back in person. It's nice seeing everybody. It's been a long time. It's been on the TV screen and we're finally back together. So, thank you as always and nice seeing everybody. And thank you for the presentation. Would you like me to close it? Or do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for the great presentation. And I agree with Chairman Mike Judge. In fact, first time I ever met Mike was right over there. I had the first person meeting in 2017. So, it is good to be back in person. And again, thank you for the presentation. Well presented and great financial status for the town. And it's very encouraging for both the town and the schools in general. So, thank you for that. So, with that, oh, yes, Council Clark.
Sorry about that. Will this presentation with all these figures be available? Under council presentations? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Wouldn't be a, a meeting without that. So, with that, pass it over back to Chairman Mike Judge for adjournment.
So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the school committee meeting?
I'll second.
I have a motion to second and roll call. Andre?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chairs, yes, passage, unanimous. But that will close our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break while everybody gets situated here on the dais and we'll move forward. Counselors, if we could please make our way back to the dais so we can continue the meeting.
Yes. Honestly, Janet, it didn't bother me. You know what I mean? I have four children.
Counselors, take your seats, please.
All right, all righty then. While waiting for the other councilors to arrive, I'm actually going to continue with the meeting. We have Quorum on the dais. So, with that, I'll just wait for them. When they want to return, they can. We'll recognize that when they do. Again, great presentation. Finance Director Mark Millens and Deputy Director Gareth Markwell. And always an important conversation. And thank you very much to the school committee for attending and joining us on the dais. And with that, I would like to start with the town manager communications. The town manager report has been pre-recorded and available to town council and the public. The report will be prepared in written form and posted on the town manager's website as in the past. The town manager and staff will be available to answer any questions regarding the report as presented. The town manager's communications for the period of October 6th through October 17th, 2023 include an update to one, a notice of special town meeting, council meeting on October 23rd, 2023 at Barnstable High School, update on offshore wind projects, update on budget action calendar. action calendar, update on local comprehensive planning committee, and five reminder to the public that questions are encouraged to be sent to Town Manager for assistance in obtaining any information. I send, again, I will say that's worth repeating, number five is reminder to the public that questions are encouraged to be sent to the Town Manager for assistance in obtaining information. So with that, I would open it to the council for questions in regards to Town Manager Report. Looking to my left, please. Anyone? I will come back, though, in case you change your mind. Anybody to my right? Councillor Starr, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. No, I just wanted to make one comment that the local comprehensive plan got 14 applications. I think that's exciting. So that's, Phil, we need some more to boost up the attendance there and so we have a good working group. So, thank you.
Great observation. Thank you, Councillor Starr. Councillor Neri has once again joined us on the dais. He's moving around. He's to my right now. You're doing a great job. Any other councillor, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask, Mark, last meeting, I did ask for a report on short-term rentals, and I just wanted to know when that might be available for the council.
Hi, good evening. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. We have been in discussions, and Mark Milens has been working with Brian Florence on the most recent DOR data, and we're probably targeting the second meeting in November to have Director Florence and his assistant Jeff Carter come and give a presentation, kind of an annual update of where we stand.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a topic of conversation in the leadership meeting, just so you know that I asked Andy Clyburn for that last week, actually, so, just so you know. Anybody else? Any other question? Follow-up? Madam vice chair? Okay. Yeah, that's great. And I don't think I have any questions at this point either. And just again, another reminder that we are having that special meeting with the voters on October 23rd at Barnstable High School. All are welcome, and that starts at 6:00. So, and I just want to thank Town Manager Ellis and his staff for assisting me in putting this together and making it a discussion, a sharing of information. And I really hope to engage many residents of the town in regards to these topics of these offshore wind farms. So, looking forward to that. All right, with that, we'll close that. And Vice President Cullen, if you could please help me act on the limits.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting on October 5th, 2023, as written.
Second.
We have first and a second. Any discussion regards to the minutes? Okay, not seeing any. If you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? One abstention. And now it is time for communications from elected officials, boards, committee, and staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Anything to my right? Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. I did attend the Sandy Neck Board meeting, and Natural Resource Director Nina Coleman told me that she contacted Captain Awesome, or whatever his name was, to follow up on the use of the halfway house on Sandy Neck, and they're going to explore educational opportunities that is compliant with the regulations that they have for that now. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comment? Announcements to my left? Anyone? Councillor Atzlos, please.
So, I think I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, and I know I was way ahead of it, but Centerville Stroll, December 10th, 3 to 6. The reason why I bring it up is we had our first planning meeting just a few nights ago, so I figured, you know, keep that momentum going. Secondly, I just wanted to highlight for Tommy's Place on Main Street in Centerville, they do, they are, you know, on a weekly basis on Sundays, they are looking for people to come and help, you know, clean and do turnover for the guests who are coming in next. So, they, there is an email they send out to their email distribution list. If you go onto Tommy's Place website, you can find it. You can sign up, and they'll send you an email reminder throughout the week, and you can sign up for time slots to go in there and help. I was able to do it once because of my commitment to my church on Sundays, but it's, you know, it's not too much heavy lifting, but it's a very important thing that they need to get done to turnover for the next families coming in. So, please take a look at that if you can, and anyone listening in the public, and anyone here, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Atzlos. Anybody else on the side? Okay, not seeing anything. I would, I'm sorry, councillor.
Could I ask our Assistant Town Clerk to give us the deadlines for voting, please, in terms of when they can register, when they can get their mail-in ballots, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you. Right now, we have in-person absentee balloting. They'll do that up until the day before the election, Monday, that, Monday before the election. We are doing vote by mail, so they can get that sent to the House, so they can do that. That, that'll be, I think it's also that Tuesday that that'll end, so that you're probably looking at October 27th and 29th as end dates for those things. So that the, we can get the ballots out to the people, and then they get it back to us, so that they can be counted.
And are the mail-in ballots considered valid if they're postmarked on the 7th?
Yes, yes, but I think it has to be before 12:00. So, yes, it would be October, November 7th, yes.
Okay.
And then there's a couple of days that we can still accept them, as long as they're postmarked on the 7th, as you said.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Thanks for, councillor. Any other announcements? Okay. And at this point in time, then, I would invite Director of the Airport, Katie Service. Welcome. For an important announcement.
Thank you, councillors, for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. Obviously, you've seen over the past couple of weeks the announcement of American Airlines adding routes in 2024 to Cape Cod Gateway Airport. So I wanted to give a quick overview to the council to identify what that's going to look like for us, and just to give you some background as to how we got here. So, the background, as you know, and I've spoke to many of you in the past, since 2007, the airport passenger activity and operations have been on the decline. That's not just new for us. There's a lot of airports that have seen that across the nation, where they have seen passenger activity and operations decline in a non-hub situation, which is what this airport is. Declines for us in particular are due to industry-wide pilot and mechanic shortages, which also is affecting the nation. Increased competition from the high-speed passenger ferries also affects us more significantly so than other airports, and the loss of several airlines over the past several years, Colgan Airlines in 2010 and Island Airlines in 2015. Those two airlines alone carried in 2007 nearly 169,000 passengers to and from our airport, and that was a significant loss that could not be really recovered. Cape Air, the remaining airline that was at the time at the facility, could not absorb all of those passengers. We did lose some of those passengers over to other modes of transportation. So in 2018, the airport embarked on a strategic plan and a business plan to help develop focus on turning the tide. We wanted to see changes in our operations, also in the way that we do business at the airport. So we developed, and you've seen this before, four major goals for the airport: to maximize general aviation activity at the airport, to diversify our revenue streams, to enhance the airport's image and branding, and to become a regional air transportation leader for the Cape and the Islands. So implementing these goals has taken place over five years. They've really have helped accentuate and improve the activity at the airport. In the five years from its inception, many of the goals have been completed or they're still underway. So just to give you an example, the photograph on the upper-left-hand side is an improved Mary Dunway. It was a rehab and an extension to that road. It's the road that's on the east side of the airport. That has garnered increased interest in that area of the airport for hangar development. I am working on three leases right now for new hangars to be developed in that, in that area. So that proves that, you know, maximizing that general aviation activity, getting general aviation, what I'm talking about is a mix of single-engine, small, multi-engine type aircraft that want to base themselves here in Hyannis. So that's proven to be very fruitful for us by improving that road. We put in a number of utilities and sewer connections, so it helps to reduce the development costs for anybody that wants to come in and develop hangars. Upper-right-hand corner, diversify airport revenue streams. Obviously, we all know that we have a 49-year lease with WS Development that's in place. From Mark Milens' earlier slides, you could see that that's a big contribution to the town as well. It also assists the airport in dealing with the ebbs and flows of our revenues for the facility and our expenses. It helps with that by having some non-aviation type of revenue coming into the airport. And then, of course, enhancing the airport's image and branding. We renamed the airport to Cape Cod Gateway Airport back in 2021. We also started a new and launched a new community event series, bringing a number of our community members into the airport for special events. A lot has to do with aviation education. In fact, we just completed our third southeastern Massachusetts Aviation Career Fair. From that career fair, I am on my fifth intern now at the airport, taking students from Barnstable High School, Montemoy High School, and other high schools that have been interested in aviation. One of our interns now is going to Bridgewater State University, where I went for pilot training. So it's good to see our youth kind of moving up through the ranks. And lastly, as part of our overall goals for our business plan were to become a regional transportation leader. Examples is adding American Airlines to our flight offering partnerships. This has been a long time coming. You can see, these are just articles from last week. You can see that, you know, it was a long-awaited win for Cape Cod. We have been talking to American Airlines for about five years now. Many of you have heard that I speak about these events that I go to that are called the airline and airport events, but more like speed dating for airlines. You go and you pitch your airline for about 20 minutes, identify to them why it's important for them to consider your facility to offer their services. I've been doing that for five years, and obviously, it's finally paying off. We also have studies that were completed in 2018 and 2019 that identified year-round residents, about 215,000. That's probably increased after COVID, so we'll have to do the study again. But identifying that, a lot of those Cape Cod residents use other airports for their transportation needs, so they're going to Providence, they're going to Boston. With American Airlines here, JetBlue and Cape Air, now we have more capability for our Cape residents to fly right from here. So, a little bit about American Airlines and their particulars. So when will service begin? It is a seasonal service right now. We hope that that changes in the future. Right now, it's June through September. June 5th, daily flight service to and from New York's LaGuardia Airport will begin. JetBlue also offers a LaGuardia flight as well. June 22nd, daily flight service to and from Washington DC Reagan Airport, which is great. It puts you right in downtown DC. They'll be flying an E-175 aircraft, slightly smaller than the JetBlue aircraft. Based on the model, it accommodates anywhere between 72 and 75 passengers, and tickets will be on sale for our routes on the 23rd, so coming up next week. And you can just go to americanairlines.com. My dad already bought his ticket, just telling you. The upper-left-hand corner is just a picture of the Embraer 175. That's similar to what you would be seeing coming to the airport. American Eagle will be the operator, or Republic will be operating the flights through American. Typical seating configuration is side-by-side, two-by-two, that you'll see there for their fleet. Lots of excitement has been flying around on social media, a lot of positive feedback that we've been receiving. So those are just excerpts from actually articles that were posted by the Cape Cod Times about folks that are really excited about seeing the service come to their, to this facility, to be servicing Cape Cod. A lot of people do want to see direct flights to Florida. That has always been a comment that I receive over and over again for those flights. The beauty of this is you can fly right into DCA, and you can get your connections to go to Florida. Direct would be wonderful, but right now, at least, we do have an option for folks that want to do that. And there's a lot of commentary that I've seen of people being happy that they don't have to go to Rhode Island, to Providence, or up to Boston, expressly with the work that will be done at some point in time on the bridges. This is, you know, something that is very near and dear to me, to be able to find some transportation opportunities for our community. That's all I have for my presentation. We're excited about this. We can't wait to start. We'll be meeting with American Airlines and their go-team next month, and we'll start planning for what needs to happen in the terminal for them. But, any, any questions?
I appreciate that. Thank you, congratulations on the hard work and your staff. Looking to my left, any questions, comments? Councillor Atzlos, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Service. How long is the contract with American Airlines?
So, right now, the lease that we have developed is for a one-year lease with them. We do have options for renewal for a total of five years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Atzlos. Anybody else? Like to comment? Question? Looking to my right, anybody? Vice President Cullen, please.
Great job. It's been in the works a long time. I'm glad to see the airport viable in light of everything that's been happening here at Public Comment and other articles in the paper. I think it's really important, and I'm thankful for your leadership. You've been awesome since you started with us, so, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Neri, please.
Again, kudos. It's a lot of, a lot of conversation, I'm sure, with a big outfit like American. I'm sure this is outside of your, your knowledge, but rates. So, my daughter flew back to Colorado with my two grandchildren and her husband for 78 bucks this summer. So I don't know what's going on through New York. She actually said it was a glitch in the matrix, is what she thought when she booked the tickets, who booked a bunch of them. So, I mean, more, more flights, more competition, hopefully we'll, we'll, you know, realize some reduction in maybe flight costs.
That's what I'm hoping. I'm not, actually, I don't have, you know, the, the know-how to determine how they're going to identify what their fares will be, but with two flights daily to LaGuardia, I could assume that flights are going to be pretty aggressive with both companies to get that ridership.
Fantastic. Great job.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Neri. Anybody else? Again, thank you, congratulations, and looking forward to that. I have, I have some family in the DC area. I'll be looking forward to see, see those flights happen, so, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you.
That's the end of our, it took a long time. Thank you for those who are bearing with us there to get through and to get to the point where we're actually going through the orders of the day. And right now, we will start our first item of old business. Councillor Shaughnessy, if you could, please, item number 2024-045.
Certainly, President Levesque. This is old business, subject to a public hearing and a roll call majority of the full council. Item number 2024-045, appropriation order on the amount of $9,800 for the redesign of the Hyannis Youth and Community Center website, as read. Second.
We have first and a second, and we have Director of Community Services, Christopher Canelo, here for the rationale, please.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, President Levesque, and the Town Council. The Community Service Department was approved $11,000.
Uh, I don't think it's microphone sound.
There we go. We'll try it again. Good evening.
This is really loud. I don't know if I may hear that.
It is, it's hard. The Community Service Department was awarded $11,000 in 2023 with salary savings to redo this website. We've all gone through the rationale before on that. We had secured someone to do that work for us, and last minute, they pulled out of that. We have, we put that $11,000 back into our reserve account. We want to reuse that money now, that's why I'm here in front of you today. We have reserved a contract, and we know a vendor, so we just need that money approved, and it's coming out of the reserves, which was recently certified at $760,000. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. And this is a appropriation, so it is a public hearing. Does anybody like to speak on this item?
I'll develop the website for under $10,000.
Director, point out, does anybody like to participate remotely?
There is no one on Zoom for this item.
Okay, if there's no objection, I will close the, the public hearing and open it up to council discussion. Looking to my left, would anybody like to speak on this item? Anybody? I thought a little fake out on that side. Anybody over here? Okay, that's okay. So with that, this is a roll call majority vote of the full council. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please.
Councillors. Atzlos.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Kuzak.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Canelo.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Keep up the good work. Okay, with that, next item of old business, Council Stein Hilber, please, item number 2024-046.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2024-046. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $3,500,000 from the General Fund Reserves to the Capital Trust Fund. This is a public hearing, roll call, majority.
Second.
First and a second, we have Finance Director Mark Milne for the rationale, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Barnstable School Committee voted to use $3.5 million from its share of the General Fund Reserves at their June 7, 2023, meeting to fund the purchase of the portable classrooms for Hyannis West Elementary School and Barnstable Community Innovation School. The item first appeared before the Town Council on your agenda on June 15 for first reading and referred to a public hearing on July 20, 2023. Since the public hearing occurred after the end of the fiscal year, there's a timing difference. We had to change the funding source from the school savings account to the Capital Trust Fund because you can't make any appropriations out of general fund free cash once the fiscal year ends. We just recently received certification of the free cash, and now we'd like to transfer funds back from the General Funds Reserves into the Capital Trust Fund to replenish the money that was up-fronted by the Capital Trust Fund for that project. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the room like to speak on this item? Anybody like to participate remotely?
There is no one on Zoom for this item.
Thank you very much. I would close the public hearing, open up to the council for discussion, please. Okay. Not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Councilors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzlos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Milne. Council Atzlos, please, if you could, first item of new business, item number 2024-049.
This is new business, item number 2024-049. Authorization to expend a grant in the amount of $8,190 from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of enhancing the town's waste reduction programs. This may be acted upon by a majority vote.
Second.
First and a second, and Director of DBW, Dan Santos, with here for the rationale, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Councilors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. The town has been awarded an $8,190 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection under their recycling dividends program, also known as RDP. The grant award was made because of specific programs and policies the town has implemented to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. The acceptance of this grant will allow the Solid Waste Division in the town to enhance its waste reduction programs for the acquisition of recycling containers, recycling carts, and recycling bins, waste reduction, and/or recycling outreach and education materials, and other related expenses authorized in the recycling dividends program contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. Councilors, any questions? Council Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, this is great. I just was wondering whether or not specifically recycling is used throughout this, whether or not any of this can be used in regards to our composting program. I would just like to make a plug for expanding that to you and Supervisor Regazio, but I just didn't know if that was excluded from this or not.
Actually, for the last year, the bulk of this money has been used on our food waste composting program, food waste reduction, and we will continue with bins, home composting, and educational materials relative to that.
Great, great question. Anybody to my right, any questions and comments? Okay. Thank you for that. And councilors, if you could signify approval by raising your hand and saying aye. I believe that's unanimous. Yes. Thank you very much, sir. Have a great night. Council Clark, please, if you could, item number 2024-050.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. This is Agenda Item 2024-050. Authorization to expend a federal fiscal year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $33,316 from the U.S. Department of Justice. This may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Second.
We have first and a second. What timing, right? Yeah, I believe so. We have Chief Chalice here for the rationale, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Council members. Jean Chalice, Acting Chief, Police Department. The department applied for and was awarded a federal fiscal year 2023 Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, local solicitation from the U.S. Department of Justice, in the amount of $33,316. The grant has been deemed a disparate certification for allocation to be distributed among two towns, based on a prescribed grant formula for each town, and the town of Barnstable PD will act as the grant administrator and fiscal agent for both communities. So for the town of Barnstable, $21,715 will be expended on taking proactive measures to collaborate, plan, and strategize our response to the largest and busiest infrastructure on Cape Cod here in Hyannis. And these will essentially be tabletop exercises through working groups for supervisors to develop plans, strategies, and tactics to respond to major incidents here. And those working groups will be comprised of members from Barnstable PD, Hyannis Fire, ComFire, Barnstable Fire, and they'll meet bi-monthly to discuss and develop co-response plans to pre-designated locations. And then along with the strategic planning, there will be supervisor leadership training provided through the FBI LIDA Program. FBI LIDA provides training trilogy, and the FBI LIDA Supervisor Class is one of those three courses. For the town of Falmouth, which is the other awardee, $11,601 will be expended on the purchase of an ATV. Falmouth Police Department's use of an ATV is extremely important to their agency. Falmouth has south and west borders on the Atlantic Ocean and 70 miles of coastline and beaches that often can't be accessed by motor vehicle. There are also numerous wooded and conservation areas throughout the town that are inaccessible by motor vehicle, and they have issues with illegal ATV operations throughout the town. The Polaris Sportsman ATV will be a valuable tool for Falmouth Police Department and will greatly assist their agency in serving the community for both emergency responses and routine patrol. The acceptance of this grant will allow both the police department for Barnstable and Falmouth to develop programs and purchase equipment not currently funded in their respective municipal budgets. There's no matching funding required for this grant. It's a reimbursement grant as expenses are incurred up to the total dollar amount, and the town of Barnstable, again, will serve as the fiscal agent and grant administrator and will be responsible for all grant oversight, grant reporting, reimbursement, and drawdowns.
Thank you, Chief Chalice. And with that, is there any council discussion? Council Schnep, please.
Mr. President, thank you, Acting Chief Chalice. Could you give a few examples of incidents that you would be using this process for?
For the tabletop exercises?
Yeah, the tabletop exercises.
So we would use that in case there was an incident, for example, if there was an active shooter at the mall, or at one of the schools, or if there was a hostage situation. But we'd be doing it so that we were prepared to address a situation at a particular venue instead of a general training. We want to be able to prepare for each particular venue, so we have a preset staging area and those kind of things, so that each venue, we're aware of the quirks and idiosyncrasies of the venue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Schnep. Madam Vice Chair?
I just want to say how nice it is to see you up here in this role. I'm thankful you're leading the police department. Thank you very much for navigating uncharted waters.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well said, Madam Vice Chair. Any other comments, questions? Just making sure. You're good. Okay. It's okay. No, it was good. The exit was great. I know there was nothing else, so not seeing any other further discussion. Council, please, if you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Now I will leave. Careful on those stairs. It's a doozy. First step's a doozy.
Council Schnep, if you could, please, item number 2024-051.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item of new business that may be acted upon by a majority vote. Item number 2024-051. Resolve that the Town Council petition, the county commissioners of Barnstable County to formally discontinue a section of county highway at the intersection of Old Stage Road, Park Avenue, and Main Street in Centerville Village, as written. Second.
First and a second, Attorney Charlie McLaughlin for the rationale, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back with another discontinuance. This particular area was, will be the site of a important service manhole that will obviously be associated with the CWMP sewer layout. When it was surveyed fairly recently, it was determined that despite the very recent discontinuances that we've just had, that it was outside of the sideline of the layouts that we had hoped would encompass the area of the manhole. So we are now petitioning the county, and they've got a hearing scheduled to go through the discontinuance processes we have with all the others, and upon their vote, the town will assume title by operation of law. There'll be no fiscal expenditure on this because we've been handling these maintenance matters for a couple of generations now. We look forward to your support. This will bring it within the ambit of town ownership and out of the county so we can do the work on-site and certify title. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Attorney McLaughlin? Any questions on the right? Okay. Not seeing any, council, if you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Next item of new business, Council Starr, please, if you could, item number 2024-052.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is order of new business, may be acted upon by a majority vote. Number 2024-052. Authorization to expend fiscal year 2024 Coastal Resiliency Grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management Office in the amount of $92,579 for the design and permitting of the Sandy Neck Facility Coastal Resiliency Project.
Second.
We have first and a second, and we have Director of the Department of Public Works, Dan Santos, for the rationale, please.
Thank you. Town of Barnstable has been awarded a $92,579 grant from Coastal Resiliency of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management. The grant will fund the remaining permitting and final design of the site reconfiguration project for managing coastal resiliency at Sandy Neck. Three public meetings were held from January through June 2023 to select an alternative for managing coastal resiliency and develop preliminary designs with community input for the project. The selected alternative involves moving the parking lot landward by approximately 75 feet, enhancing the primary dune, and relocating the gatehouse to higher ground where it will be safer from flooding. The grant funding will advance the existing engineering plans to 95% design, obtain an order of conditions from the Barnstable Conservation Commission, finalize mitigation actions for unavoidable impacts to eastern spade-foot toad, prepare final 100% engineering plans and specifications, and continue public education and outreach for the project. The beach facility has experienced coastal storm erosion along the dune, protecting the parking lot multiple times since 2011. The coastal storm erosion has resulted in the town spending approximately $850,000 to Norris to Sandy Neck Dune with approximately 28,000 cubic yards of sand. This grant will allow the town to progress through the remaining permitting and final design of the Sandy Neck Beach Facility Coastal Resiliency Project. Funding supplements capital projects that were outlined in capital improvement project plans fiscal years 20 through 24, 22 through 26, and 24 through 28. The town will provide a 25% local match in the amount of $30,882. Match funding will be provided through the fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, Project 2023-073. There's no impact to the General Fund or the Department of Public Works operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos, for the rationale. And now, open up to council discussion. Any questions to my left? Council Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, this might not be an appropriate question for you, but could you possibly characterize what might be considered mitigation actions for the unavoidable impacts on the eastern spade-foot toad?
I don't have the details of that, but I can get that for you.
Vice President Cullen, please.
Is there anything to do with the fish passage in here at all? I was asleep till I heard about the toad, and, you know, here I am. No? Okay, good.
You're leaving the council?
Yes. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Actually, because I attended the Sandy Neck Board Meeting, I believe that Natural Resource Director Nina Coleman mentioned that they might have to look for trade properties, acquisition of other properties that might be suitable for the spade-foot toad. So that's part of the explanation.
Thank you, Council Clark. Council Starr, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. So my question is, is this going to get us to the final, through all the permitting process? So we'll be shovel-ready and ready to go?
Yes.
Excellent.
Well, we've got to get the funding for the project.
Yeah, I know. That's a whole 'nother step, you know? Come back.
But yes, design and permitting will be complete.
Okay. Excellent. It's been a long process, but the public has been involved at every step, and it's been a great back-and-forth and redesign, and I appreciate the process. Thank you.
Any other questions on this side? I think it's important, though, for the public to know that, yes, we're moving forward, we've got the study, we've got a lot of this paid for, but in the end, when we become shovel-ready, what is the cost of the project possibly? What could it be?
Right now, the cost estimate is $5.3 million.
Correct. And how much of that could we get possibly in some funding?
Well, we're hoping to get all of it.
Okay.
There's a couple of opportunities available.
Okay.
Both federal and state, and we're pursuing those to the extent we can, and we're very hopeful. CCM has been very supportive, and I know, well, I would hope that we would certainly get a portion of this from them.
Okay.
And they are working with us, with federal agencies as well, so.
Great.
For the best.
And again, all the support in the world for getting that done, and I appreciate all the hard work done on this, but obviously, the project's not going to be inexpensive, so just important for the public to realize, and not that it's not important, it's just that there is a substantial cost to it. So with that, any other questions, comments? Okay, great. Then I would ask the council to please raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, your staff, all your hard work. Council Neri, please, if you could, item number 2024-053.
It's my pleasure, Mr. President. This is new business, and we will refer to a second reading on November 2, 2023. It's item number 2024-053. Authorization of a housing development incentive program, tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Atlantic Apartments LLC for 11 new market-rate residential units located at 171 Main Street and 16 School Street, Hyannis, as written.
Second.
We have first and a second, again, referring to a public meeting, like, what? That's what I'm, I'm sorry. I just misspoke. Yeah, that's okay. A second reading on November 2, 2023. Thank you, Counselor Clark. And so, please, counsel, if you could, raise your hand, say your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Refer to a public, I mean, refer to a second reading. Okay, moving forward. Vice President Cullen, if you could, please, 2024-054.
Yes, I'd like to refer to a second read on 11/2, 2023. Item 2024-054, authorization of a housing development incentive program. Oh, I'm reading a long one, but that's okay. Authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Dunroven II LLC for eight new market-rate residential units located at 68 Yarmouth Road, Hyannis, as written.
Second.
First and a second, referring to a second reading on November 2, 2023. Counsel, if you could, signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye. That is unanimous. Counselor Steinheber, please, if you could. Item number 2024-055.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to a second read on November 2, 2023. Item 2024-055, authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and CCR Holdings LLC for 10 new market-rate residential units located at 50 Yarmouth Road, Hyannis, as written.
Second.
First and a second, counsel, if you could, please signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Counselor Schnep, please. Item number 2024-056.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, a first reading and a refer to a second reading on 11/2, 2023. Item 2024-056, appointments to a board, committee, or commission. Resolve that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, commission. Counsel of Aging, Janet Kramer, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Licensing authority, Jessica Silver, as an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2024.
Second.
First and a second, again referring to a second read, November 2. Counsel, if you could, signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Counselor Mendez, if you could, please. Item number 2024-057.
Yeah, thank you, President Levesque. This is new business. Item number 2024-057, acquisition of an easement for sewer purposes within Maywood Avenue and Newton Avenue in Hyannis Port. May be acted upon majority vote.
Second.
First and a second, and we have Attorney McLaughlin here for the rationale, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Municipal sewer is currently not available for the properties at 25 Maywood Ave. and 8 Newton Avenue in Hyannis Port. The property owners, Stephen Leslie Corin and Margaret and Michael Kerr, as trustees of the Kerr Family Trust, approached the Department of Public Works about the feasibility of connecting the properties to the existing municipal sewer system, which terminates about 250 feet west of the property on Hyannis Avenue. The DPW reviewed the feasibility and has worked with the owner's representative and engineer to develop a design for municipal sewer extension, which will allow the properties on Maywood Ave. and Newton Ave. to connect to the municipal sewer. The property owners proposed to install at no cost to the town a sewer extension from 25 Maywood and 8 Newton Ave. to the existing municipal sewer on Hyannis Ave. The owners agreed to connect the private property to Town Sewer and shall at their own cost and expense design the proposed sewer extension and connection to DPW standards. The design plans and specifications should be reviewed and approved by the town engineer prior to approval, prior to approval to commence construction. The owner will allow the town engineer and representatives from DPW to enter the property as needed to review the plans and conduct necessary inspections. The, this location is included in the town's CWMP, but is not scheduled for actual seoring until Phase 2. As far as financial impact, there will be no negative impact, but in fact, the estimated cost of this construction of $100,000 in a Phase 2 will now be avoided, saving the town about $100,000 in 1920, excuse me, $20,000. We'd ask for your support on this. I'll just make note, this tracks very similarly the arrangement that we had with Cape Cod 5 a few years ago in doing the sewer treatment plant, and we actually are working on two other commercial properties on 132 that are approaching us in the same approach. So, same idea. So, it's catching on and popularizing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McLaughlin. I was actually on the zoning board of appeals when the Cape Cod 5, that pump station, it was kind of a brand-new idea, and I actually read that into the record. So, yeah, I remember that quite fondly.
Good work on that.
Yeah, thanks. Again, not much of a heavy lift on my part, but great work by the town and obviously generosity of the Cape Cod 5.
Yep.
That being said, counsel, are there any questions in regards to this item? Counselor Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charlie, I just am wondering, you know, obviously, we're saying no financial impact here, which is fantastic, but the design plans and specifications shall be reviewed and approved by the town engineer. I assume that's a nominal amount of time and effort?
I understand it is, and they've been involved in the consultation on this program all along, and so it will mimic other projects we're already doing in private roadways and so forth in terms of actual infrastructure. So, not a lot of heavy lifting on this one. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Starr, please.
I have a few questions. Thank you, thank you. Is the, now, is this going to be, are they going to build a sewer, part of a sewer main, is this a sewer main connection? Does that make sense? I mean, is eventually it going to be continued down the road? I don't
Yes, they're actually going from in front of their properties out to the roadway and extending down 250 feet to the stub of the existing sewer.
Okay, so it's, so it'll be as big as we need it?
Yes.
Hopefully, okay. Is it, is it gravity feed now? Must be.
I don't know that detail. I'm sorry, counsel.
I think it must be, because, okay, okay. As long as the engineering department's looking at it, I will stop.
I believe it is gravity feed, but I won't stake the fire on it, so. Thank you.
Town manager Ls, I believe it is. We don't have vacuum feed there.
I don't, yeah. I don't know exactly where it is.
Why wonder when we have Town Manager Ls here?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Yeah, basically, and it's extension, not a connection, so it would be an extension of the existing sewer and do meeting the specification of DPW. I don't know what lies beyond it in the future off the top of my head, but it would be designed such that it can continue on. But you have somebody step up that wants to expend the funds that we would in the future to install what we tell them needs to be designed.
So, does the road have to be dug up and repaved?
I'd have to look at the design to see. Typically, the sewer runs through the center of the road, but I'd have to look at this one and see. The owner incurs all expenses associated.
Thank you.
Yep. We've seen this more and more. There's another residential in Hyannis Port. Certainly, we see it on occasion with commercials. So, they don't, you know, they're ready to go. It falls in the plan, and what they're proposing is, doesn't create a problem. It's anticipated. They just accelerate it. Thank you.
That's nice. Our residents partner with us. Counselor Clark.
I just want to, thank you very much, President Levesque. I just want to commend the Kerr family for, for jumping in and being proactive on this sewer expansion and saving the town $100,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clark. Any other questions, comments on this side? On this side, are we good? Okay. Counsel, please, if you could, raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Attorney McLaughlin. Madam Vice President Cullen, please, if you could. Item number 2024-058.
Yes, item 2024-058, resolve allocating the Town Council President the authority to designate a moderator to preside over and regulate the special Town Council slash open meeting of the voters scheduled for October 23, 2023.
Second.
First and a second, Attorney Karen Nober here for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Karen Nober, Town Attorney. As you know, a special Town Council open meeting of the voters has been scheduled for October 23. That's a result of a citizens petition that we received pursuant to Section 8.9 of the Town Charter. The Town Clerk has certified 358 signatures. 300 voters, 300 signatures is what's required. The Charter provides that the President of the Town Council or other designee of the Town Council shall preside and regulate the proceedings of such meetings. We were looking to identify a moderator for this meeting. At the time this meeting, our Town Council meeting, had to get posted. We were still looking for a moderator, so that's why we structured the vote as a delegation to the Town Council President. But he has identified a moderator, which would be Attorney Mike Ford, who is a land use attorney in Harwich. He's also the Town Moderator for Harwich, and I think he's very comfortable and experienced in performing this role for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Attorney Nober, for that. And so, any counsel questions in regards to that? Looking to my left. Did take some time to find the moderator, so, hence, but very thankful for Attorney Ford for agreeing to do so. Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a good choice. I think that this would, this is a good way to proceed, that we have somebody independent from the council. Just a kind of a procedural question. If we don't have a quorum of counselors, does the meeting go forward?
I think the meeting goes forward. It's not technically a Town Council meeting at that point. We noticed it as a special Town Council meeting, because if nine counselors do show up, it is a meeting, and if we didn't notice it, then we would all have to go home. So, that's why we did it that way. I think you could still go forward, because it's an open meeting of the voters under the, under the Charter.
Since some of us aren't aware of the details of the meeting, is there any opportunity to share with us how we will be seated and what, I mean, maybe not within this item, but before we adjourn tonight?
I don't, I don't mind saying it at all. Obviously, the agenda's been posted, I believe.
We've posted.
Right? We posted the agenda. If you, did you have a chance to take a look at that at all? It's okay if you didn't. What we're going to do is we're going to take the five topics of the petition, and we're going to break it down into half-hour segments. That's ideal. If there's extra time, we'll leave that time to the other items, possibly. There were five topics specifically placed in the petition, so that's why those five topics we adhere to. And it'll be held to those five topics. So, we will start the meeting with just myself doing a quick introduction, handing the meeting over to, obviously introducing the moderator, handing the meter over to Town Manager Ls, the, so, to give kind of a why we are where we are kind of introduction, you know, for about 10 minutes, and then we will get into the topics from there. And then after the topics of discussion, we're leaving some time on the agenda for the organizers of the petition to come up and give remarks. They say they would just like to give thanks and give some closing remarks in regards to the, the meeting itself. And then after that, I wanted to make sure that each counselor had an opportunity to speak, because it is, you know, a town meeting, if they so like to. I, I did, you know, I do prefer that each counselor, I'm limiting the, I put a limit of the public for four minutes per question, and I would ask each counselor also to adhere to that if possible. Just, I think that's fair. So, we may go over a little bit, depending on how much counsel participation there is, over nine o'clock, but at that point in time, the meeting would, would close. As far as seating goes, I thought it was important that we weren't really on the stage. I didn't want that perception to be that we were over any of the audience members, so I felt it was important just to be on the floor. The first row will be reserved for counselors, and then at the table, there'll be a table down below, and that will probably be counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Cullen, myself, Town Manager Ls, and maybe another microphone there to invite staff to speak. There'll be a podium with the moderator, and then there'll be two microphones in the aisleways so that the public can speak and come and ask questions. So, I hope that gives you, if anybody has any questions or further discussion, please. Counselor Cusack?
Thank you for explaining that, Mr. President. Just one question about whether or not it will be broadcast on channels 8 and 1072.
So, I would, I know the answer to that question, but Director Poyant could probably answer better than myself.
Thank you. Lynn Poyant, Director of Communications. It will not. There is a planning board meeting that is taking place here in the hearing room, and that is what is designated to be broadcast live over our channels. However, we are recording the meeting, and we are, people are able to watch it live by going to the town's YouTube channel for Barnstable Community Access, or Government Access, sorry, Barnstable Government Access channel. And we have provided that information on the agenda.
Just to add to that, there will not be remote participation, but there will be the ability to watch it.
Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Just curious, do we anticipate that representatives from the developer, Avangrid, will be there?
They know about the meeting. They're not going to give a presentation. However, they can respond, and they can comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Atzos, please.
Since the permitting and decisions rest with the state, are any members of our state delegation going to be there? State representatives, senator?
They have been invited. They have been notified, and I'm well aware that counsel, I'm sorry, Town Manager Ls has also reached out to Secretary Rebecca Tepper, and I'm not sure of any response, Town Manager Ls.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. An acknowledgement that we've asked.
Okay.
I've talked to Rep. Diggs. I've talked to Senator Seer, reached out to the secretary's office. Senator Seer has also reached out to the secretary's office, because I think, as you all know, the role of the Energy Facility Siting Board is critical relative to any of these projects as they proceed through permitting. So, we thought that many of the questions that are really, that are directed to us, but they're really for the state, it would be helpful. And everyone has acknowledged, and that's the best I can offer.
Excellent. Thank you, Town Manager Ls. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other? Counselor Atzos, please.
I just ask that you save me a seat, because I will tell you now, I will be tardy. I have a previous commitment off Cape, and then I'm going to be in rush hour traffic from Dedham to the Cape around 5:00. So, please save me a seat.
You'll have a seat saved. I believe there's 15 seats in the first row.
I appreciate it.
So, there'll be plenty of room.
Thank you.
Anybody in my right-hand side, any questions, comments? Counselor Schnep?
Now that I've had a chance to look at the agenda, could you further clarify if Town counselors are going to be invited to respond to each of the five areas or just at the end?
Just at the end.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Starr?
No, I, I agree with that. I think this, we have to keep in mind, this is a, this is a fact-collecting exercise. Some of the questions we'll be able to answer, some, some staff will be able to answer, some we're just going to have to send to the, the Siting Board, some, some we're going to have to send to the proponent. But we'll, hopefully, we'll collect the questions, give the answers we can, and come back with the answers at some point. So, it's, so, I, I perceive myself making no comment whatsoever during this meeting.
Understood. Thank you, Counselor Starr.
I'm glad we're having it, and I'll, I'll be there.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay. A lot of hard work gone into the last couple of weeks trying to make this happen. So, I really appreciate, I have to thank Town Manager Ls, Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, and really important advising me along the way as I map this out. Town Attorney Karen Nober, I really appreciate your help throughout the process. Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion about the moderator, the moderator or not?
We don't. I mean, if you authorize me, you know, I've obviously made it public that, who we chose, and, but, so if you do that, then you're basically approving that. You're approving me to do that. Well, yes. Right. Oh, yes, we're going to vote this. I'm just saying. He's asking if we needed to change anything necessarily. So, that being said, counsel, if you could signify your approval for item number 2024-058 by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
I think that is unanimous, so. And very much appreciative of Attorney Mike Ford for moderating this meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. We got a second. We got first and a second. Counsel, if you could, please raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a great night. Thank you for joining us.